Recording in progress.
Okay.
Alright, they're all coming in.
So, we're letting everyone in. Unfortunately, it wasn't set up as a webinar. So, if everyone could mute yourselves and... And if anyone who would like to address the Planning Commission on Public Comment for items that are not on the agenda, that would be the two public hearings, the Pets rezoning and the Goodrich Theater. Please indicate by raising your hand. Otherwise, if you would, everyone would keep your video off and yourselves muted. That will really help the bandwidth. And I apologize that the meeting was not set up as a webinar. That makes it a little more difficult. You got it, Neil? I'm gonna go call back.
iPhone B needs to mute themselves.
If everyone could, yeah, iPhone B, can you?
Barb, how do I mute myself?
Where is this thing? Up here? Yeah. Okay. Mr. Summers.
My name is Harvey Summers. I apologize.
Yeah, you may wanna, yeah, you did mute your iPhone. Yes. So, this is a public comment for non...
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Harvey Summers and I'd like to make a public comment. I'm at 2129 Autumn Hill Drive. And I will also want to talk later about the Pets property. But I'm wondering why the Planning Commission has a policy that people cannot make public comments on any issue, including those issues that are going to be in a public hearing if they choose to do so. For instance, on the Goodrich Theater, if I chose not to wait an hour or so to get to that and wanted to make that comment now, I'm wondering why the Planning Commission policy is not to allow that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else? Alright, then... Alright, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment portion of our meeting. Moved by Commissioner Hyde, support by Commissioner Sharma. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma. Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culberson.
Yes.
Okay, closed.
Okay, public comment is closed at 7:18. Alright, then we're moving on to our business session and the advertised public hearings. So, I'm going to declare the OA number 21007 Pets rezoning public hearing open. And we will proceed with first the presentation by the applicant. Then we will hear our reports from our consultants. And then we'll open it for a public comment on the rezoning. If, if the applicants could go ahead and turn on their video and if they have a presentation, you can share your screen.
Hi, we are Lauren and Steve Springer. We are the applicants. Fortunately, we don't have a presentation. We are looking to purchase this property from the Pets. We are looking to develop a single-family home on the property. We are very interested in this property because of its natural beauty and the amount of trees and the land that it currently sits on. We are looking to rezone this, I think in its current zoning, PUD, the Planned Unit Development. We won't actually be able to proceed with building a home on this zoning. So, we're looking to have it rezoned to a state residential. For us and our needs, we are looking to start a family soon and we're hoping to be able to just create a single-family home. The land is beautiful. We want to keep that, maintain the beauty of the land. We're going to be, to my understanding, it would be well-inseptic. So, we're looking to kind of keep along with the standards of the property and the regulations.
Thank you very much. Alright, Mr. Luhan, Carlisle Wortman's report.
Try to get a camera. There we go. People can see me. I'm sure everyone's interested in seeing me. Alright, there's me. Okay, thanks, everybody. This is a rezoning. This is just a straight rezoning, as the applicant mentioned, from Planned Unit Development, PUD, to ER State Residential. The state residential would allow one home per two and a half acres. The subject site is right around 22 and a half acres. It's currently zoned PUD. This project at one time was part of a Planned Unit Development project that did not move forward. However, the PUD zoning remained in its current place. And because the current, because the PUD rezoning remained, it really is a, it's kind of a non-zoning district because Planning Unit Development is supposed to be a rezoning to a specific plan and the specific plan has long since expired. So, in an effort to be able to use the property, the applicant is requesting to rezone their 20, the subject 22 and a half, maybe someday their property, but the current 22 and a half acre vacant property from PUD to ER State Residential. So, when we look at a rezoning, we like to try to make a series of findings of fact for the Planning Commission to consider as you're making your deliberations. In this particular case, there are, we mentioned a, kind of a variety of of single-family land uses surrounding the property. It's really all single-family residential with Walnut Ridge subdivision to the east. Some large lot, actually an ER State Residential property directly to the west. Dexter and Arbor, or excuse me, Miller Road to the south. And other single-family residential, you know, across the road. But this is, this is essentially in an area surrounded by various types of single-family residential. So, what the applicant is proposing would certainly be in keeping with what's going on around the property. With regard to the master plan, the current Sienna Township master plan calls for this site to be a designation called Low Density Residential. That designation, Low Density Residential, allows for a single-family property within a density range from one to two and a half acres. And this property being proposed rezoned ER would fit within that at the two and a half acre range. So, we have no issue with the, the current Sienna Township master plan. With regard to natural resources, the site does contain a significant number of woodlands, which the applicant notes in their application and was mentioned by him a few moments ago, are, you know, an element that they, of course, would like to preserve in their building and home and appears to be an element that drew them to the property initially. So, we have, we have no real concerns with natural resources. The applicant will have to, if there are any issues with significant tree clearing or anything like that, that would come at a later date. But typically, a single-family home would be a very low-intensity use for such a large piece of property. With regard to development potential, we we like to mention to the Planning Commission all of the uses that could occur with the rezoning and not just the use that the applicant is requesting because once rezoned, it could, any of the uses within the state residential zoning could occur. And we provided all of those uses on pages three and four of our review. Generally speaking, the permitted uses are things, obviously, single-family residential, farms, farming operations, adult foster care, maintenance of animals, nature wildlife preserves, things like that. Conditional rezoning, or conditional use, things could be governmental buildings, daycare facilities, schools, churches, parks, and other outside recreation things and community waste park and utility systems. So, the Planning Commission has to consider all of the uses and not necessarily the use just the applicant is proposing because we can't really hold them to that. Once, once property is rezoned, any of the uses that are permitted by right could occur there. With regard to traffic impact and site access, if rezoned to single-family residential ER, the total number of homes, you know, if used as single-family would be, would create a very minimal traffic impact. If anything other than a single-family home was to occur here, some of those other higher-intensive uses that I mentioned, those would have to come back in front of the Planning Commission for site plan approval. So, if there was something that could create an issue with traffic, we would see that again as a site plan. With regard to essential facilities and services, as mentioned by the applicant, they're proposing well-inseptic on the site. So, there's really no public services that would be impacted. And with regard to rezoning factors, there are five factors that are noted within the Sienna Township zoning ordinance that the Planning Commission is supposed to consider. We list those for your information on pages four and five of our report. We believe those five standards, particularly since this was a a old expired PUD and the property is essentially unusable unless the property is rezoned, we believe that the criteria have been addressed. If you have any questions about those, we'd be happy to try to answer those. Based on the comments of this analysis, we do recommend approval of the proposed rezoning from PUD Planned Unit Development to ER State Residential. We recommend the proposed rezoning based on the findings of fact that I have just gone over, but I'll reread those for the record. The applicant's requesting a rezoning of 22.47 acres from PUD to ER. Number two, a variety of residential zoning districts and single-family residential properties surround the property. Number three, the subject rezoning from PUD Planned Unit Development to ER State Residential coincides with Township Master Plan designation of Low Density Residential. Number four, the site contains woodlands that will largely be preserved. Number five, all uses found within the ER zoning designation should be considered as part of this rezoning request. Number six, the ER zoning district will generate minimal traffic impact. Number seven, the subject will require well-inseptic services as reviewed. And number eight, the five criteria for rezoning have been reviewed and have been found to either not be applicable or have been addressed. So, as you, as you can see, we are recommending approval of this rezoning request.
Thank you very much, Mr. Luhan. And with that, we will open OA number 21007 to public comment. If, we will first ask anyone who is present at the Township Hall if they want to make a comment and we will move to those who are online. And if you could raise your hand if you'd like to make a public, a comment on the Pets rezoning. And if there's anyone by phone, if you could indicate you want to make a comment by pressing star seven. So, with that...
Okay. I will kind of monitor the room here. There is no one here in the room that has indicated they would like to speak. We do have one hand up from Mr. Harvey Summers, who is here, or who is on, who is joining us via Zoom.
Go ahead, Mr. Summers. Thank you.
Harvey Summers, and I'm still living at 2129 Autumn Hill Drive. From the information I've been able to review, this seems like a positive plan for this property. So, I welcome the possibility of new neighbors next door. I see on page eight of the packet, page three of the Carlisle Wortman analysis, the sentence, "The site contains woodlands that will largely be preserved." I'm a little curious about the largely. "I hope the Planning Commission will confirm that there will be no changes to the status of all of the MDEQ, Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, regulated wetlands on this property as the commission changes its status and as development is undertaken." Be good to preserve those since they are MDEQ regulated. "I also note that Vopers planned for a single-family dwelling with an onsite well. Has Sienna Township been in communication with a developer, about the test well directly across Miller, Miller Road from the Pets property, which appears to show the presence of low levels of dioxane in tests in both July and September of this year? Apparently, the well readings were 0.8 micrograms per liter in July, 0.79 in September. Micrograms per liter is apparently parts per billion. It's a very low number, but still. Does Sienna Township know whether Mr. and Mrs. Springer are aware of the dioxane plume in our underground water? And does Sienna Township have any obligation to ensure that people are aware of this? Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Is there anyone else that wishes to address a Planning Commission on the Pets rezoning?
Scan the list here. Let's see, I do not see any other hands up at this point.
I noticed Laura Hindle unmuted. Is there... Did you address us? Nope, okay.
Yeah, let me, let me just look. It's quite a large list. Let me, let me scroll down again to see if, make sure that no one's got their hand up.
Yeah, and just for people's note, if, if you have a computer, you raise your hand by pressing reactions and then raise your hand at the bottom of your screen. If you have a tablet, it's at the top of your screen.
Yeah, and I do not, I do not see any other hands raised at this point.
Okay.
Oh, there's one, there's one, got one. Or, I don't know if that's a hand or...
Ms. Sparrow, go ahead. You have to unmute for us to hear you.
Thank you, you're with us.
Sorry for the confusion. I'd just like to say, please, that I am Laura Sparrow. I live at 3080 Walnut Ridge Drive. And like Harvey, I live in an adjoining property. Frankly, this plan strikes me as a wonderful use of that property. It's very beautiful. It has all the assets that they numbered and spoke of. And we would love to see just exactly this kind of residence built as an extension to the neighborhood we love. It's a very beautiful area and a gentleman's farm sounds like a perfect use of this unique property. That's it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Alright, alright, then I will motion to close the public hearing. Moved by Commissioner Hyde. Support by Commissioner Sharma. Right? Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please. Secretary Chang.
Holland.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sharma.
Yes.
Hyde.
Yes.
Chang, yes. Culberson.
Yes.
Closed.
Okay, then we are closing the public hearing at 7:36. Alright, then we'll move on to Commissioner questions and discussion. Commissioner Chang.
I actually have several questions. If you prefer, would you like me to ask them all at once to Mr. Luhan? Or just individually, just so we can keep track?
Go ahead and, why don't you just go ahead and issue them all, go ahead, them all and then we can follow up if they don't, I'll get it.
So, my, my very first question is, this was previously zoned PUD and it was mentioned that the, it was expired. I'm just curious, what was it previously proposed for in that PUD? I, I just wasn't sure if this was part of the Walnut Ridge PUD or it was a separate PUD. My next question is, if they're proposing to rezon the ER, it sounds like it's a two and a half acre minimum. Would they, I did the quick math there so that you could split this lot up to nine times. So, is it possible that they could do nine individual homes on this site if they were to divide it in the future? And why, since it sounds like they want to do single-family, is ER the appropriate zoning? Why not a single-family residential zoning there? So, I'm just curious about that. And finally, I, I think if there's, it sounds like there's a lot of natural features on this site. If it were rezoned to ER or even single-family residential, does the township have jurisdiction on regulating woodlands and landmark trees? So, those, those are just some of the questions I had right off the top of my head.
Let me try to hit those, Jan, or do you want to just wait? Okay. This PUD, I believe, actually predates Walnut Ridge. There was a PUD for the old Walnut Ridge and this property, and I think the property next to it. That was part of a Planned Unit Development project that just never happened. And Walnut Ridge actually came after this. So, that this has been PUD for quite a while and it's just, just one of those odd circumstances where you have a, a PUD zoning. You know, the township could have rezoned it at some time in the future, or sometime in the past, I should say, but just never did. And so, it's just been out there as this odd zoning district with really no standards. So, the only, the only way you can do anything with this is to rezone it to something. So, they're proposing ER. The ER, so the ER designation, it's, it's... I would have to do, I'd have to do some math myself on the total number of divisions, but the State Land Division Act likely wouldn't allow nine divisions. Now, they could, they could, in theory, divide, do it as a psychondo and, and do a, you know, take some additional splits above and beyond the State Land Division Act. But even if they just did some simple divisions, the applicant would have to come back with a private road. That would be reviewed by the Planning Commission and ultimately the Township Board. And, you know, in, the applicant can certainly address this. And again, we can't hold them to, to anything, but, you know, the state residential designation is our, is our lowest, really, single-family district at two and a half acres. So, you know, could, could they get nine divisions? I, you know, I'd have, I'd have to see some layouts in the private road plan and there'd be a lot that would go into that. They certainly could get more than two and it really depends on how it was laid out. The, as I mentioned, the state residential is a single-family zoning district. It's our lowest single-family zoning district. There's certainly an argument to make that our A1 agricultural zoning district is also a single-family zoning district for that argument, but the black and white of it is that our ER State Residential designation is a single-family designation and it's our, it's our lowest density, single-family designation. And there isn't ER, there isn't ER zoning district directly west of this. So, it would kind of match one of the existing designations. And then with regard to woodlands, this site would be subject to the Township's woodland regulations. Woodland regulations are only exempt, I think, for lots that are two and a half acres or less. So, anything larger than that would be subject to our woodland regulations as well as our wetland regulations.
Excuse me for interrupting, Mr. Luhan, but I believe there might be a person or two in the waiting room. If you could let them in, please.
It's hard for me to, my report and monitor the meeting at the same time sometimes. So, anyway, so I hope that answers Commissioner Chang's questions.
Commissioner Chang, did that work? Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Good questions. And other commissioners with questions? Commissioner Hyde.
Just a simple one. I, at first, I didn't see it, but since the applicant is not the owner, there was a checkbox on the petition, on the ordinance amendment petition that says that there was a letter attached. And I'm assuming that that's been reviewed, but just not in the packet. So, there was an authorization from the owner to go ahead with this rezoning.
The applicant nodding, but I can check that.
We'll confirm, yeah, we do have that. Apologies if it wasn't in the packet. I thought I had attached it. But we did obtain owner authorization and did attach that.
Right, it's, it's in the filing that went to the city. Great.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore, did you have your hand up?
I did. I, I too was interested in trying to understand the request for the rezoning to ER. I wondered if, Mr. Luhan, you know why that was selected over A1 or R1 rezoning?
I don't recall. You might want to ask the applicant that question? I don't know if the Springer's, you...
Yeah, yeah. So, in kind of reviewing the different types of zoning, ER was what we were interested in because we are interested in potentially doing a hobby farm, maybe if some, a few outbuildings, some small animals. And I think when we were looking at ER, it seemed to have what we wanted for a home. There were homes nearby that were also zoned as ER and would kind of give us the options for our potential... for our potential future use as the hobby farm.
Thank you. And I understand that there might have been some people having some technical problems joining. And if you would like, unfortunately, we did close the public hearing. But if you would like to email your comments to, um, the, uh, it's just Planning Commission, I believe, at siotownship.org. Those will be included in the comments for this evening. All right, other commissioners, questions? All right, uh, comments and, um, and I'm also interested in, uh, we, the Planning Commission can, um, take action on this if, if, uh, you so desire this evening. So I'm also interested in whether, uh, people are comfortable in moving forward or have additional questions or comments. Commissioner Holland.
I am comfortable moving forward with this. And the reason, the reason is, is that this is the, um, least dense residential. And I think it's an appropriate use for the property.
And I also am, um, fine with moving forward. I, I think this, um, because there are some adjacent zonings that are both ER and R1, it makes sense probably more than a, you know, an agricultural zoning. Commissioner Chang.
Yeah, I, I, I also support this. Um, just for clarification though, anything that's more intensive than a single family use would have to come back, whether it's, you know, for a conditional use, if it's a school, a church, an assisted living facility, um, land splits that might require a private drive. So just for clarification, we are really approving something that's a single family. Anything more intense would have to come back in front of us.
Mr. Luhan, would you respond to that, please?
That is correct, yes. Any, any, any new structure that wasn't a single family home, would have to come back to the Planning Commission. You know, farms and farming operations, no. You know, they could build barns and stables and things like that. And they would just need a building permit for that. In theory, you could do a small roadside stand if you had some farming products to sell. That would not need site plan approval. But any of the conditional use items like governmental buildings, daycare facilities, schools, churches, community parks, you know, country clubs, golf courses, anything like that would require not only site plan, but a conditional land use request.
Thank you. Then I, Commissioner Holland.
Hey Doug, uh, as far as agricultural tourism or, um, event barns, that would not be, uh, uh, used by, right?
Um, that, those are only permitted in the A1 district.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so I am willing to entertain a motion.
Commissioner Moore had her hand up also.
Sorry? Commissioner Moore.
I was just going to say that I, um, in agreement with the other commissioners, I think this is a good use of the property in that area. And I would be supportive of moving forward with.
All right. So I need a commissioner to please make a motion. Commissioner Hyde.
I could take a stab at it. I would move that we approve rezoning of the 22, uh, thousand four hundred seventy, um, 22.471 acres along Miller Road that is vacant, designated H08133004 from PUD to a state residential ER.
And the findings of fact that they meet the criteria for rezoning as stated in, um, Carlisle Warman.
Warman's summary.
Shouldn't we refer to OA number 21007?
Yes.
That's rezoned.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep.
Wasn't sure that was needed.
Those are friendly amendments?
Second.
Those, is there support?
Second.
Support, uh, so the motion was made, um, to approve the rezoning by Commissioner Hyde and support by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Roll call vote please, Secretary Chang.
Hey, Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Sharma.
Yes.
And Commissioner Culberson.
Yes.
Okay, Carrie approved.
Okay, thank you. And so it, uh, I believe the rezoning will move on to, um, the Board of Trustees. So thank you very much. Right. We are going to be moving on. If, if everyone who is not a commissioner could please mute yourself. Thank you. Um, I have to apologize to folks one more time. Uh, we, um, this meeting was not set up as a webinar. And so, um, Mr. Luhan is sort of the, um, the meister in charge and did not realize that the waiting room means that you can't really hear what's going on in the meeting. So I apologize to folks that, uh, that there was a delay in, uh, allowing them to gain access. So, um, we're going to try and make sure that things get set up as a webinar, uh, in, in the future. So, uh, not everybody is, um, on the screen. So we're going to move on to our, uh, second public hearing. OA number 21008, the Goodrich Theater rezoning. And again, um, we will start with, uh, the applicant's presentation and move to our consultants' reports and then to public comments. So with that, if, um, the applicants could go ahead and turn on your video and, um, be permitted to share screens, uh, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. Before I start, um, I just want to make sure I do a, a mic check. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, good. Good evening and, uh, thanks for hearing us tonight. My name is Josh Swardini. I am with Etkin Real Estate, uh, 150 West Second Street, Royal Oak, Michigan. Um, and, uh, I am here on behalf of the owners, uh, Jackson Road Cinemas LLC for the, uh, proposed amended PUD at 3686 Jackson Road, of which proposal is for unit one of a three unit condo. And I think I'll start a little bit with giving, uh, a background on the, uh, property. I assume, uh, that most everybody has this background, but for those that don't, I will, uh, try to make this quick. Um, so the property, uh, in, in, that we're proposing on unit one currently, uh, is consisting of a, um, movie theater. Goodrich Theaters, uh, opened in the late nineties and for the past twenty some years has provided a clean, family-friendly entertainment establishment for the community. And, uh, as we all have learned, um, when the pandemic hit, uh, the movie industry, um, has been affected quite heavily and has moved to a different, um, type of product. There's some things that have happened in the industry where, uh, the competitive nature of theaters has changed in that, uh, a lot of the theaters that opened back up, um, provide an amenity-based theater, which has to do with food and beverage and different types of seating, different types of, um, movie screens. Uh, but also one of the big factors in the movie industry has been that, uh, the, uh, actual movies have been provided, uh, pay, pay-per-view type situations at home. So as such, uh, the, the Goodrich, um, uh, operational group tried to make the best they could of it, um, during the pandemic, but had since, uh, closed. Uh, and we tried, uh, and we have tried to, to work out, um, subsequent operators in the space, which opened back up, um, on a limited basis, uh, but since has closed as well. Uh, so we're before you here tonight to try to, uh, uh, propose a new mixed-use project that would be receptive to the market while putting in use our property, um, along Jackson Road, uh, which would consist of mixed uses of a conversion of the movie theater to a, um, multi-level, uh, uh, climate-controlled self-storage facility as well as, um, retail and, uh, an office building in the northeast corner of the property. We've done our due diligence on the, uh, underlying PUD. We've met with, um, staff. And so in our proposal, we understood and understand that this, uh, met, this change to the current PUD is considered a major amendment, given the, uh, existing underlying PUD that's in place is, uh, only based on the existing use of a movie theater. So the proposal that we have, uh, although be considered major is a change in use and additional mixed uses along with it. Um, I'm happy to, uh, answer questions, but I think Doug's, um, presentation will probably go through, uh, a more in-depth, uh, dive into, um, site planning and zoning questions that, uh, hopefully we can talk through and work through. Um, we don't see anything in the reviews, both by engineering and by planning, that we couldn't meet and satisfy, uh, and will cooperate in any means possible to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, was there anyone else from the applicant's side that wanted to say anything? Or Josh, you are the main representative.
Yes, yes, sorry.
Okay, great, no, that's fine. All right, uh, Mr. Luhan.
Uh, thank you. So this is a, uh, preliminary PUD. And as the applicant had mentioned, this is a, um, because of the change in nature of the use, uh, this is not just a minor change to the PUD. This is what be, what we would consider to be a major PUD amendment, which essentially requires the applicant to start over. So the applicant has to, um, go through very similar, you know, almost identical steps to when this project was first approved. And the Planning Commission, ultimately the Township Board, will have to determine that all the standards for, uh, preliminary PUD have been met. And just for those watching at home and in the audience, we have an actual number of folks in the audience tonight. Uh, this is a, this is the very first part of this process. So this is at the preliminary PUD stage. Um, how SiO Township's ordinance works is there's a preliminary PUD that goes to the Planning Commission. Preliminary PUD also goes to the Township Board. After that process, that allows the applicant the, the right to apply for final PUD approval. Final PUD approval or preliminary PUD approval does not grant, the site plan doesn't grant zoning. It just allows the applicant to take the next step. The next step is a final PUD plan. That plan also has to go in front of the Planning Commission and then ultimately the Township Board for rezoning. So, uh, best case, we're looking at four meetings, um, that this project would be reviewed in front of the township. And if the, if the Planning Commission, uh, chooses to postpone this project tonight, which is really our recommendation in this case, uh, we're looking at a minimum five meetings. So there's, there's time, you know, pretty substantial amount of time here for the public to provide comment, both at the public hearing and then, uh, in ensuing meetings during the public comment and/or providing written comments to the township and for, um, the applicant and the township, uh, to work on the project uh, as, as it's planned. So, um, that's a little bit of the process of kind of where we're at. Uh, very, this is the very first formal step in this process. So our review is about twelve and a half pages long. I'm not going to get into the specific details of our project, but I will go through the recommendations and try to elaborate on those a little bit. And then if planning commissioners have, uh, any comments, I'd be happy to try to answer those. So in looking at our recommendation section, I'm starting on page 12 of our report, uh, we indicate that, um, the comments of our review should be addressed prior to this project, moving on to, uh, the final PUD stage of review. Um, and really I would modify that a little bit. I'd like these comments to be addressed prior to this really moving forward out of the Planning Commission. So those comments are, um, uh, the first one, the applicant, uh, discusses phasing of the project. There's some discussion about, um, obviously changing the movie theater into a, uh, indoor self-storage facility. The pro, the project also shows, uh, two small retail buildings as you enter the site and an office building to the east, uh, kind of northeast part of the site. They indicate that this will be done in phases. However, we'd like to see a little more information on the phases and to show, uh, phasing lines added to the site plan. We also mentioned that it would be helpful to have some kind of understanding of when. So we'd like to not only see the phasing line shown on the plan, but perhaps some discussion about when those phases, when the applicant might think those phases could occur in a little more detail than they provided. Uh, the second item is a very important one and, and, uh, really of, of many of the comments in our, in our report here, this is one of the bigger ones. And, and that is that a statement that describes how the project meets the objectives of the Planning Unit Development District should be provided. Like any PUD, because this is a major PUD amendment, they have to basically provide all of the information that we would be getting for a brand-new Planning Unit Development project. And so the applicant should really provide some information about how this project meets all of those standards. So the body of our review talked about, gives the section numbers and all that sort of thing. But, um, there are a number of criteria that have to be met for a project to be considered a planning development. You know, the, the least of which is, is, is not the, um, uh, the project describing, you know, how this project meets the public benefit criteria of a planned unit development. So we would like, um, a, a written statement indicating how the applicant believes this meets all of the objectives of the PUD district. Uh, the third item is Planning Commission consideration of conformance of the Township Master Plan. Uh, the master plan, the underlying master plan, although this is zoned PUD, in, uh, the underlying master plan calls for this property to be composite commercial. Composite commercial is one of our more intensive commercial zoning districts. It allows things like outside storage of materials and, um, automobile dealerships, for example. So it's, it's one of our, it's probably our more, uh, intensive commercial zoning district. And so, uh, but there are some certain criteria that the applicant is supposed to meet. We'd like a little, um, more information from the applicant on how they think they meet that. And ultimately, the Planning Commission consideration of how the township, how this project might meet the Township Master Plan. Number four, the Planning, Planning Commission consideration of each of the four PUD standards is noted above. Each of these, uh, standards are to be referenced as a part of the Planning Commission's recommendation, recommendation to the Township Board. Um, our review of those four PUD standards at this point and how those standards relate to the current master plan indicate that these standards have not been fully met. Uh, part of that has to do with the applicant not providing that project narrative. But at this point, you know, I, I can't sit here and indicate and tell the Planning Commission that all, all of the PUD standards have been fully met. Uh, the fifth item, um, while there, you know, this is a developed site and there are, we're not talking about massive woodlands. Um, the applicant should indicate, uh, what existing vegetation on site will be removed. Uh, number six, a traffic impact study, um, may be required. Uh, that is typically, that is typically required or requested by the Washington County Road Commission. So we'd be looking to determine, uh, if the Road Commission has reviewed this and if they will be requiring a traffic impact study. And if it is required, that impact study would have to be reviewed by the county as well as the township engineer. Number eight, township engineer review of the preliminary essential facilities and services. I see Stacy Sardar is on the call and I'm sure she will address those items in a, in a few moments. There is a open space requirement for PUDs. It's a 30% open space requirement. The applicant is improving areas on the site that appeared in some cases to be perhaps existing green space. So the applicant has to meet a 30% open space standard. We would like to see that calculation, see how the applicant can meet that calculation. So that needs to be verified. And when we look at setbacks for a building, when, when you do a PUD, we try to use the setback standards that are used for the underlying zoning designation. And in this case, the underlying zoning designation would be a C4 designation based on the master plan. So we'd like to see how the applicant meets those C4 zoning standards. If they can't meet those C4 zoning standards, they have, they may have to require deviations from the zoning ordinance, which can occur as part of a PUD, but those would have to be requested by the applicant. There's a 50-foot buffer requirement that the applicant will have to meet around the entire site. That buffer requirement can be reduced upon the request of the planning commission and township board. But if they do need that request, they would have to ask for that. We would like to know what the existing number of parking spaces are and how those, what the net losses parking is going to be on site based on the proposed redevelopment. There is a parking calculation provided, but we just like a little more information on the parking spaces and what loss has occurred. We do have to recognize that there are two other uses on site that have some joint parking rights to this project and want to make sure that that is being considered. There is a, currently 122 parking spaces in excess, according to the applicant's calculation. Our ordinance requires if, if there's excess parking, that the applicant is supposed to provide justification for that excess parking. So we have a number of parking questions, as you can see from our report. The applicant is supposed to provide bicycle parking based on the standards of the ordinance. We have some questions about vehicle, truck, I should, I should say, truck deliveries and what types of deliveries will occur on site. And, and as it relates specifically to the retail businesses up front on the project and for the self-storage, as far as that goes, you know, how will deliveries and loading occur on site so that they do not impact other existing businesses within the property and future businesses that might occur on the property? This project, according to the Scioto Township zoning map, is contained within the Jackson Road overlay district. We want to make sure that the Jackson Road overlay district building design standards have been met. Typically, applicants will provide a short narrative on the elevation drawing indicating how the Jackson Road overlay standards have been met. So we'd like to see that. The initial PUD indicated that there, there was supposed to be some architectural coordination with existing and proposed structures. So, you know, the initial, the initial theater and the two outlots that are now constructed, we're supposed to have some common design elements. And we'd like to know how the applicant proposes to keep in the spirit of the existing PUD and kind of try to retain those existing architectural design elements. In association with that, we'd like to see a color rendering of those elements for the planning commission and provide some planning commission initial, you know, conception or get the planning commission's initial comments on those. And then finally, this project was initially developed as part of a site condominium. So this is, this is actually a three-unit site condominium project. And there is an existing master deed bylaws for these three, this three-unit site condominium. It would, it would seem to me that there will have to be changes to the master deed bylaws with the new proposal on site. And we would like to see, you know, due to the significant changes that are being proposed, we would like to see at least a draft or, you know, some discussion of how the master deed bylaws will be amended for this site. And and if they are amended, we would like to know if the two existing units have some say in those, in, in those amendments to the master deed bylaws. The three units would be the Carlisle Restaurant, the, the commercial center to the west of, or to the, yeah, the west of the Carlisle Restaurant. And then, of course, the, the Goodrich Theater site itself. Those are the three units within the condominium project. And then we have a few final site plan or final PUD issues that I don't think we have to really get into right now. But, you know, we've got 22 items to be addressed. It would be my recommendation that this project, you know, not move past the planning commission at this point and that the, you know, subject to comments of the public, which we'll open up the public hearing in a moment, and, and the comments of the planning commission, that this project be postponed and come back in front of the planning commission for further consideration. So that, that would be our recommendation in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Luwan. OHM.
Good evening, everyone. Our review letter was dated October 27th. And similar to Doug, we also are not recommending approval of the plans at this time. Our letter is also rather extensive, although most of the comments are relatively minor. Our letter includes three PUD comments that include clearly identifying the proposed public benefits, providing a traffic impact study and noting that potential water or sewer infrastructure improvements may be triggered by this development. Our letter also includes some preliminary site plan comments for the applicant's benefit. Like I mentioned, they're all relatively minor, although there are a lot of them. These include comments such as providing additional detail and information regarding the proposed water and sewer, providing preliminary stormwater calculations and additional stormwater information, clearing some, clarifying some layout, site layout items. And then some other smaller items at the end of our comment list. I've spoken with the applicant and they've noted that they plan to address these comments in future submittals. So if any of you have any questions on any of our comments, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Right. With that, we'll go to our public portion, public comment portion of the public hearing. And we'll start with those who are present in the room and then move to those on, on computer and then by phone. So, Mr. Luwan, I'll have you recognize public who wish to provide comment on OA 21008, the Goodrich Theater rezoning.
Okay. Can you guys hear up? There we go. Okay, yes, and we have, you can name, you know, give your name and address and you have the floor.
Evening commissioners. My name is Sam Kilberg. Address is 39577 Woodward Avenue, Suite 300, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan. And I'm here on behalf of Jackson Street Associates LLC and AADC LLC. They are the two other condominium unit owners, as was discussed by Mr. Luwan, in the Goodrich PUD. We did submit a letter in opposition to this application, which was dated Friday. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it. If you haven't, I do encourage you to take the time. We specifically break down why, under the ordinance, this application should be denied. And mainly, the reason for that is this proposed application is to put a self-storage facility in a large commercial area, you know, an important commercial area in Scioto Township. And it's really a novel idea to make the anchor building a self-storage facility surrounded by retail and office. And, and we have the same concerns as the staff report noted of the timing of when those retail units are even going to go in, if and when they're going to go in. But really, you know, if you think about that area with the Goodrich Township Theater, or sorry, the Quality 16 Theater, what the application is proposing to do is make that a self-storage facility and build commercial units around it. Now, that's a novel idea that is nowhere else in any of the other storage, self-storage facilities in Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, or quite frankly, we've never seen that across the state. And that is because self-storage facilities in and of themselves aren't really compatible with the commercial area. And you look at where the other self-storage facilities are in the, in the township. You have them down on Liberty Street. You have them over in, behind Meyer on Jackson Industrial Drive. They're really, self-storage is really mostly for the industrial areas, areas. And that is really the main reason why this application cannot be approved, is it cannot meet all of the PUD requirements because the self-storage facility is not compatible with this area. It will have negative impacts on the surrounding uses and it will really deter any growth, commercial growth in the area. But we do know that next door, there is an existing large self-storage facility. That facility actually predates the, the actual PUD in 1998. So it's not like this is a, a, a new thing. The, the self-storage that is there before was there before. And really, to put another one there, you would be creating a storage corridor on Jackson Road. And that's something we want the planning commission to consider. On Jackson Road, a, a important commercial area, as, as the staff report notes, this is a composite commercial area. You have an existing restaurant, you have existing shopping center, and you're going to put a self-storage facility that, you know, the application doesn't include any information on, is it going to generate pedestrian traffic? Is it going to, you know, bring more foot traffic to the area? Because that's really what this area contemplates, what's the ordinance contemplates, and that's what the master plan contemplates. In fact, the ordinance in and of itself, we believe violates this application. So, you know, Section 36140A regulates how self-storage facilities are to be regulated in the township of Scioto. And specifically, it says, "No activity other than the rental of storage units and rental of outside storage space shall be allowed." It excludes no commercial, wholesale, retail, industrial, or other business use on or operated from the facility shall be allowed. To me, that means exactly that a mixed-use development of self-storage and commercial is not compatible. And that's exactly why, as we explained in our letter, which I encourage you to look at, we break down every single one of the ordinance under 3625C and how it cannot meet. And specifically, the, the last one I'd like to talk about is really the, the negative impact on the surrounding properties. Carlisle Grill and the shopping center next door have legitimate concerns about whether this proposed development is actually going to bring citizens, bring residents to the area and be good for the commercial corridor area. We have a large storage facility next door and we're proposing another self-storage facility. So we have concerns of whether, one, are we going to be able to maintain our commercial tenants? And are we going to be able to find new commercial tenants that want to come and put their place of business next to a self-storage facility that doesn't generate pedestrians, doesn't generate, you know, traffic, that doesn't bring people to this commercial area? We understand the applicant's position. The Goodrich Theater, you know, it's closed. We understand with the COVID pandemic that this area, it's, it's probably, movie theaters aren't going to be what they're going, what they're used to be. But we propose that, or the applicant needs to come back with a new, new idea, something that is more and fits the character of this area. For those reasons, we ask that you deny the application and allow them to resubmit with a proposal that really fits this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the township hall that would like to address the planning commission on this matter?
Hi, I don't remember what, but, Peter. My name is Jim Cameron. I'm a resident of Scioto Township. I live at 1662 Chicory Ridge. I used to be a trustee here. I used to be on the planning commission here. And strangely enough, those times, when this PUD was approved, I was on one or both boards and worked on this. My recollection is fading, as Doug was kind enough to point out, this is 27 years ago. But it seems to me, in my recollection, that we were very specific about the purpose and use of this property. And when we, when we did a lot of work on, on what the PUD should say, that, you know, those specifications were, were pretty tight. If this particular building is going to be made into a big box storage unit, and I know there are some other things that are under discussion, it's going to ruin a really good symbiotic relationship. After we had, and I, and I would like the, the commission to focus on that a little bit. After we had the theater in, Ms. Romanos came in with the Carlisle Restaurant. His operation brought people to the theaters and the theater's operation brought people to him. I know it's a different time and place, but restaurants are having a hard in a fabulous daze. And to, to do something like this would not be helpful. So let me just say, I hope you'll think about it. We have a lot of creative people in this township and around here. And please give it some thought. Thank you. And thank you for your time, by the way.
And thank you. Your past service, too. Do we have others?
Good evening. I am Christine Green. Hello, hello commissioners and Madam Chair. I'm Christine Green. I live at 4505 Dexter Road. And I'm speaking in opposition to the Goodrich Theater PUD amendment request. And I agree with everything that Mr. Cameron said. And I'm here only as a resident. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your service. I know how much work it is to sit on the planning commission, but I also know how important it is. And thank you all very much for your service. Planning Commission and the board, historically, more in history, have imagined Jackson Road, especially between Wagner and C, and even beyond Z a little bit, as a hub of commerce in the township with restaurants and bars and retail establishments and entertainment options, such as the bowling alley and the theater, with sidewalks connecting all of it to encourage pedestrian traffic and with, with bus service as well. The idea was to bring people down to the Jackson Road more. The current master plan, I think, and the new master plan in progress, both reflect those initial conversations. You all know the issues Doug has, has laid out very well. You know, the issues that you must consider in reviewing the application. So I'm just commenting on the considerations that I think are the most important as you review this application. And first, of course, I do not believe that the proposal, proposal conforms to the master plan. The future use for this area is mixed-use commercial. Currently, it's Zone C2, where of course a self-storage facility would not be allowed. Mr. Luwan says that the, the future use designation actually translates into the composite commercial zoning district of C4. But even in the C4 district, self-storage units are only a conditional use, which leads me to my second concern. And that has been, has been stated previously, and I agree with, with the fact that the proposal does not meet the standard for conditional use under our zoning ordinance. A conditional use, as others have told you tonight, must be compatible with the neighboring uses. And the proposed use of a storage facility is not compatible with the restaurants and the, the with the restaurants and the commercial kind of upscale retail within the PUD. It's not going to work. That's one reason that the recent applications for self-storage units are way out, even beyond Baker Road in our township. So my final concerns are about the PUD standards themselves. And Doug outlined those for you very well. But this application does not meet the PUD standards or the PUD design standards for a number of reasons. It places a burden, actually, on the surrounding land and on the other owners of, in that particular, or covered by the PUD. It takes away a significant portion of their shared parking. Not so much the storage facility itself, but the retail, the additional retail and the other office space. So it definitely puts an extra burden on the other property owners. It would change the essential character of the surrounding area. As Doug pointed out, it would set the tone for future redevelopments west of the site and even across Jackson Road to the south. And as it was stated, as was stated previously, I think it was a storage, can't remember the term that he used, but a storage, you know, a storage cell. So this is not the tone that we want for that area. We want a lively, commercial area with lots of opportunities for people to gather. And this is not what we would have with this facility. This does not provide, the open space is a great concern to me, the fact that, you know, I don't know really how much, 30% is supposed to be reserved for open space in a PUD. And that's always been very important to the township. And it's going to become, I think, even more important with all the work that you're doing on a carbon neutrality plan for the township because land use is going to be a factor in that. And I think this last point that I'm going to make is maybe the most important to me. The applicant, as we've discussed here before, has not shown a benefit to the users of the project or to the community. And this is a requirement of our PUD ordinance. And we've always taken it very seriously. As I have said, there are additional burdens that are placed on the other users of the PUD. I don't see a benefit to the community anywhere here that we would not enjoy without the PUD amendment. There are no pocket parks. There are no uses for the public or even for other owners of the PUD. There are no features that would facilitate pedestrian traffic throughout the Jackson Road corridor, no additional protections for land or trees or any other natural features. And those are just some of the things that other PUDs have in this township. We haven't seen any here. I know you have worked very hard to, and others before you have, to make sure the township develops as the residents want it to. So I hope the planning commission will see fit on the basis of all of the governing documents to deny the application before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. So anyone else present? To address the planning commission?
Does not look like, does not look like anyone else in the audience here would like to speak. So I'm looking at the participant list for hands. So if you are, let me put this back on myself here. So if you would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand and we will call on you. We have quite a few folks here in the audience tonight, 26 people.
Would you check the waiting room too, just to be sure?
There's no one in the waiting room right now. And all 26 are in the meeting right now. And there are no hands up at this point.
All right. Then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing on OA number 21008, Goodrich Theater rezoning. Commissioner Hyde.
I agree.
Motion, move to close?
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there support?
There's support.
Moved by Commissioner Hyde and supported by Commissioner Sharma to close the public hearing. Is there further discussion? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Chang.
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sharma.
Yes.
Hyde.
Yes.
Chang.
Yes.
Culbertson.
Yes.
Closed.
Okay, then we close the public hearing at 8:29. And we will open it up for commissioner comments. And I would just like to focus those comments on some of the big picture items rather than the small details since we have quite a long list of items in both our engineers' and planners' report. Commissioner Hyde.
Oh, thank you. I also saw the write-up in Section 36140 about our self-storage standards. And the one public comment about Section A of that was to the point that I was going to be making also about no commercial, wholesale, retail, industrial, or other businesses shall be part of the facility. And I wanted to ask Mr. Luan if indeed, having a PUD with one building being self-storage, but associated buildings as part of the PUD, is that part of the facility that is being talked about in Section A? So that would be my first question. And then my second question had to do with another part of 136, I mean, of 36140. And that is that the Section E in there, "All storage units must be accessible by circular drives, clearly marked out, et cetera, et cetera." It seems to be implying that self-storage units would be separate units, perhaps all in a row and connected, but they would be units that are accessible by driving. Can we have that, what's been proposed, where you would pull into an overhang and then have to park, get out, move your things into the building, move through the building, deposit them? Is that, does that meet our self-storage facility definition? So those are my two questions about self-storage. And I'd like to see if that could be addressed.
I would say that the quick answer is that because this is a PUD, the applicant can do this. They could request this as part of a PUD. PUD is a rezoning to, you know, a specific plan. And it allows a fair amount of flexibility. The first part you mentioned about the commercial uses as part of a self-storage facility, I believe, has to do with the prohibition on operating commercial businesses out of a self-storage unit. So that was meant to prohibit, like contractors and that sort of thing, to actually operating out of a storage unit itself as a business place. I don't think that has to do with separate buildings on a mixed-use PUD project. But I can try to dig into that a little bit more. And then the drive-in, again, this is, the drive-in, the drive-up part that you mentioned, I believe, is, you know, referenced in a typical self-storage facility where you would have external doors, kind of like the Pirate's Cove self-storage down the street. Skyo Township has never had a fully internal, climate-controlled self-storage facility proposed. So I think that standard, this is just a completely different type of facility. So I would have to look at that standard also. But the short answer is because this is being proposed as a PUD, the applicant can request those kinds of changes to the underlying zoning as part of the PUD.
Thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Chang.
It sounds like there's a lot of information that's due, so I'm not going to rehash a lot of it. But if I caught the beginning, I think, of Mr. Luan's presentation, I think before this even moves forward, the petitioner should know, it sounds like this is part of a condo association and that you need the other members to at least sign on to give you permission to move forward with this project. So before we even get down to all of the details about the retail that's proposed, the office uses, when that's going to be constructed, I would say before this even returns, you're going to need permission from the other, you know, owners of the condo. And it sounds like they probably don't support this. So I'll leave my comments right there.
Commissioner Holland.
Doug, did I hear you say that this does not meet the underlying, existing underlying zoning?
No, well, self-storage facilities are a conditional use, as I think Chris Green mentioned in the public comments. So a self-storage facility in and of itself could occur here as a special land use.
But the PUD is an underlying zoning of C2, correct? So the PUD is right under the C2?
There's no, 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 no. There's no, whatever underlying zoning was there before is gone.
It's gone.
It's PUD, yeah. It has an underlying master plan designation of composite commercial, which would be most similar to the C4 zoning district.
So I don't, I have not heard much support here. And instead of making the petitioner hopeful that this may be approved, I don't see that this is going to be approved. And I would recommend that we move forward with denial. I guess, is there any support out there from any of the planning commissioners?
Not for me. I would support your denial if that was a motion.
Not something I just know.
Anybody support, have some support for this?
Commissioner Moore.
I was just raising my hand, trying to move things along. I would support Jay Holland's idea of not moving forward with this.
Okay, I would like to, I would like to recognize the petitioner. Do you have a comment that you'd like to make?
Yeah, I do. I don't want to get into the details of answering all the issues that were raised. Obviously, there were a bunch. I just do want to say that this was a preliminary application. And given the ordinance and what was required for the preliminary application, there were, there are a lot of things that were raised in the two letters, both by staff and engineering, of which we do believe we can work through in a next submission before we come in front of this commission. And in those responses, we would hope that we would be able to satisfy not only the applicable zoning requirements, but also answer questions related to the specific use and the requirements and the compatibility. There are some things that I believe that we do have in the current proposal that answers most questions in a favorable manner. And some of the stuff that was mentioned here tonight, we'd like to have the opportunity, at least, to work with staff and try to see if we could present something back to this commission that answers most, if not all, of those questions. I just ask that we were afforded that opportunity.
Thank you.
So Jan.
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. So I just wanted to make it clear that I didn't want to put forth any unrealistic expectations. I wanted to let them know that we could table this. But I think it's unfair to tell a petitioner. Sometimes the tabling means, gee, go get us, go do a lot more work. And if you're willing to go do a lot more work, you kind of know where the planning commission sits on this now and you're going to have to turn this around. That's all, that's the message I wanted to send. Thanks.
Yeah, and I just want to add that there was an opportunity in the presentation to even, to talk about public benefit and some of the other concerns about compatibility with the existing uses and so forth. And I just didn't, you know, hear any of that, which really raises, you know, big red flags in my mind that the intent really isn't to provide a public benefit, but to find the first use that came along for redeveloping the theater building. And that is a real concern because replacing something that is, that truly draws people into that area in the township and supports the other businesses and works well with the other businesses, something that has very little traffic, I think, is is not really what was meant for the original PUD nor what we would hope for the future of that building and that site. So however, if the petitioner thinks that they would like the opportunity to overcome all of those obstacles, including the condominium, you know, we could entertain a motion to table. So.
Can I, I mean, yes, we would like that opportunity. And I apologize, in the original presentation, I didn't even realize that we were having to give a presentation because it wasn't known to us. But regardless of that, we thought this was just preliminary in nature. We were going to hear the correspondence that was given to us from staff and then have a chance to react to it. So that's all that I'm asking that we are afforded to do if we can't prove or convince you guys that this is the right development. I fully understand that, but we would just like to have that opportunity.
Thank you. Commissioner Holland.
Therefore, I move to table ordinance amendment 21008, Goodrich Theater rezoning. Need any amendments to that?
Yes, Secretary Chang.
This is more of a question. If we do postpone this or table, let's say, is there a deadline? This is probably a question for Mr. Luan. If we don't hear back from the petitioner, say, within six to 12 months, is that an automatic withdrawal from them? Or is this just going to linger on for an indefinite amount of time?
Why don't you guys, you could put a, you could put a deadline in your motion.
Like three months?
Yeah, say, three months, four months, I don't know, whatever. If the applicant thinks they can get it back to us in, say, four months, is that three months? I don't know.
So a friendly amendment would be with a time constraint of four months to address issues raised in the reports and commissioners this evening.
Accepted amendment.
Thank you. Is there support? Motion supported by Commissioner Hyde.
Do we have a question from the petitioner that, or not? Is that a lingering hand up?
Oh, yeah, no, that's just, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
No problem, no problem.
All right, is there further discussion? And then we'll take a roll call vote. And this is to table OA number 21008, the Goodrich Theater rezoning.
Did Doug have a question? I saw, I saw Doug stand up.
Yeah. My comment would just be that, just so we're clear, that it would come back at the first meeting in, are we at November, December, January? December, January, February. So the first, if we don't hear from the applicant, it will come back on the first meeting in March for a decision of the planning commission.
Thank you for that clarification.
Accept that.
All right, right. Hearing, no other discussion, a roll call vote. Secretary Chang, please.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Sharma. Commissioner Culberson.
Yes.
Okay, it is tabled.
Right, thank you very much. All right, moving on, we have no unfinished business and we're moving to new business, the master plan adoption. Mr. Luang, want to give a short introduction?
Yeah, short introduction, this is the, got in front of you a final draft of the master plan dated November 5th, I believe. And it tried to take into account the comments that we received at the joint meeting of the Township Board and the Planning Commission back a month ago or maybe two months ago now. And we have a number of changes. I provided a report to the Planning Commission that outlines each of the pages where changes occurred. And I think we were very familiar with this document, gone through it a number of times. And so I will just, so for those watching at home, let me back up a little bit. We are at the final stage of the adoption of the new Scioto Township Master Plan. The Township Board did not assert its, its right to be the approving body of the master plan. So the Planning Commission will be, you know, if this, if the Planning Commission decides to approve the document this evening, it will be adopted. And that will be, that will be the final approval for the master plan. So as I said, you have a current version of the plan at the end of the joint meeting of the Planning Commission Township Board. We received some comments that night. And then kind of in the ensuing couple of weeks, I received some comments from various planning commissioners and township board members. I tried to make all of those changes, and those are reflected in that report. And I will try to answer any questions that the planning commission might have at this point. But I would hope that we would have some kind of motion this evening to adopt the master plan. And if there are a few minor changes, I think we can accommodate some minor changes and still go ahead and adopt the plan. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chairperson Culberson.
Thank you, Mr. Luang. I'll open it up to planning commissioners. Commissioner Hyde.
Thank you. I spoke with Doug earlier. On page 13, I had a minor issue with it, and I guess he feels he could clear it up. Figure one on page 13, existing land use. It still says with woodland and wetlands, even though it's been separated, the woodlands have been separated off into a later figure. And the woodland's no longer appearing here. Plus, I had a little issue with the color coding. There seems to be some duplicate colors. And so I'm just asking if we could clean this figure up, not change the data that's embedded in it, but just make it more legible.
Yeah, and we can certainly do that. We did, I spoke with Commissioner Hyde earlier today. And yeah, the title can be changed, that doesn't affect the plan. This is an existing land use map, so this is simply supposed to reflect what's on the ground right now. So this is not a plan or anything, we're not proposing any changes. I don't think Commissioner Hyde was suggesting any changes. Just change the title of the map to simply existing land use, which is, I think, would be perfectly fine without any additional change to document itself.
Thank you.
Other commissioners? Doug, I had two comments, and I think maybe my comments, when they got downloaded, if they weren't downloaded, they weren't viewable on Dropbox. But the two that I do want to make sure get corrected, they are on page 62 and 65. The design guidelines still refer to the old language that refers to lead as opposed to the newer language that is more encompassing about water conservation, et cetera. And that would just be to substitute the new wording for the lead wording.
All right, I'll make sure, you said 62 and 69?
65. Yeah, all the other design guidelines have the updated wording, but those two didn't, didn't get the word.
Yeah, I think we all agreed on that verbiage. That must have just been left out, so I apologize for that.
Other follow-up comments? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adopt the, is it dated November 5th, I believe? Master plan as amended with, was it figure one on page?
Page 13.
13.
Existing land use, yeah, figure one, yes.
And adopt, altering the guide, the design guidelines to be consistent with consistent wording on pages 62 and 65.
Was that a, was that your?
Well, I can't make a motion, so.
I would move that motion.
Okay, so we have a, a motion. Is there support for the motion to adopt the master plan as amended this evening? Commissioner Chang. And that was support?
I will support.
Okay, further discussion? After how many years?
More than I'd like to say.
Yeah, okay, then I don't see any further discussion.
Are we adopting all 135 pages?
Yeah. All 135 pages.
I hope so.
Okay, a roll call vote?
Hey, Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland.
I'm staying.
Commissioner Moore.
Well, that's an interesting vote. Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Sharma.
Yes.
Commissioner Culberson.
Yes.
All right, approved, 5-0.
Great.
All right, well, congratulations, everyone. That's, that's an awful lot of work, and thank you for everyone's review and contributions. And thank you, Carlisle Wartman, for working through the months and months and two different planning commissions to make this happen.
And, and a pandemic.
And the pandemic, yes. Yes, all right, so moving on.
Oh, I'd like to, I'd like to mention, commend Doug on all the hard work he did in getting this with all the different people and personalities over a two-year period to get this worked through.
Indeed.
Thank you, Doug.
Yes, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to Huron River Watershed Council sent out an official communication to us on the first portion of the upper middle Huron River plan. And Commissioner Hyde, I don't know if you wanted to sort of introduce it at all or make any initial comments since you are representative.
If I unmute myself, yes, this is their management plan, and it separates out our section that they're now calling the middle Huron. In the previous iterations, it was, it included more of the Huron River watershed than, than it does now. And in here, they document all, all of the findings, all the testing. They have proposals for what needs to be done going forward. So there's quite a bit of data in here. I have to say, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have the totality in my grasp right now to summarize everything. But there's quite a bit of data here for us to work forward with. It looks like the Mill Creek watershed and the Honey Creek watershed play a big part in Scioto Township, of course. But there's, there's E. coli that is above standards that we need to worry about. There's flow rates that are above desired levels that occur when you have rainfall. So there are things that we could do as commissioners and then going forward, how we might be able to bring in some of that excess flow, some of that washing into the river of, of potential contaminants that lead to ill effects on the river. So we're doing, we're going in the right direction, it looks like. There's been some improvements in the creek sheds. There's more to go, so that's the start, that's the introduction I could give.
So I'll open it up to other planning commissioners if you have any comments that you would like to be included in our official communication back. And I think we do have some time. So what I'd like to propose is that commissioners do take a look at this document. It's not completed yet, there's still, there are recommendations forthcoming to come. So what I'd like to do is, you know, keep it open until our next planning commission meeting, and then we will, you're welcome to email comments to the overall planning commission. And if you have any, and then we'll put together a response. Commissioner Hyde, did you have something that you wanted to?
Yes, I would just say that also on the 18th of this month, there'll be Huron River Watershed Council Board meeting. So if anybody wanted to participate or listen in, they could be, they could zoom in on that.
Great, thank you. And, and I don't know if commissioners have gone to the Huron River Watershed Council page, but there is so much data that you can get on the river itself, the tributaries. You can even take a, you can go a trip down the Huron River, the Huron River Water Trail. It's, it's a pretty amazing site, so I hope you, you take a look at it because it's quite a resource. All right, then we'll leave that open and respond collectively after our next meeting. Okay, moving on to our reports and commission activities. OHM.
We have nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Mr. Luang, anything from Carlisle Wartman?
Nothing tonight, no.
Okay. I, let's see, from, I just want to say that the Environmental Task Force is continuing, continuing their work. And our next presentation, which will be the first Thursday evening in December, I forget the date, is going to be the Harry Sheehan and Evan Pratt from the Water Resources Commission. And that's always first on the agenda. So if you want to join in for like the first half hour or maybe 45 minutes of the meeting, they're going to talk about green infrastructure. And it's interesting because Mr. Sheehan has a forestry background in addition to dealing with water. So it should be a very interesting presentation. And if you're most welcome to join us, it will be recorded, as was our greenhouse gas inventory and energy and buildings. And that hasn't gone up on the website yet, but it should be up probably by the end of this week if anybody wants to take a look at those, the presentations. So the presentations are always going to be at the first section of the meeting, so it's easy for people to, you know, watch the recordings. All right.
And when is that meeting?
I'm sorry, when is the meeting? It's seven o'clock, let me see, December 2nd. And it starts at seven, and it is virtual. And there's a, there's always a link with the agenda, and that's posted on the website, too. Okay. I did not get anything from Commissioner Carteau from Board of Trustees. Zoning Board of Appeals has not met. We are meeting this month, and I think there are four things on the agenda. DDA, Commissioner Holland.
A DDA met today, and we discussed, among other things, well, the bus shelters are on hold because of the weather, and they're having some trouble with, with getting the easements and right of ways in place. And they're being worked on by those that are doing that. We have a draft plan going of our long-term, our longer-term plan. We're, we're still dealing with the, and moving forward with the Brownfield on Jackson Plaza. Enterprise Drive has been completed. The paving there, and we're looking at other road enhancements, including the North Zebra Quarter. And we, and I'm trying to find it here, how much it was for. We did get a, I believe it was a grant, okay, we got a grant from the state of $750,000 for the North Z road enhancements and crossings and walkways and crossings across the ramps and so on. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
I just would like to.
You have a question?
No, not a question, I just have a comment. I got some feedback from the public that they really like the Jackson Plaza improvements.
Parkland Plaza?
Parkland Plaza, yeah.
Yeah, good. That was, and that was, DDA contributed to that, but that was, that was a real big push by Jack. He got that done in Bryce and Will, from, from a lot of people. But it just, it was time to not have a guy in a wheelchair riding down the road with a orange flag up in the air.
No joke. Yeah, thank you very much, Jay. All right, Rakash, has the Row Commission Advisory Committee?
Right, right. Yeah, we had our first meeting last Wednesday, November 3rd. The activities were more around the selection of the chairman, the vice chairman, and the secretary. Um, um, the activities were more around the selection of the chairman, uh, the vice chairman and the secretary. Uh, supervisor Hathaway also participated in that meeting uh on that day. And we basically were setting the agenda as to, well, the dates and, days and the dates we want to meet. And the selection of the different uh, uh, people that I mentioned a moment ago. Um, other than that, uh, there is no particular agenda. We did have discussion on SEDs, the SED process. We also talked a little bit about how to educate the members on how roads are funded in Michigan. Uh, one of the members uh offered to do that, he's a civil engineer, but yeah, that's kind of what we discussed, so. And more to, more to come at the subsequent meetings.
Okay, it's good to see that getting kicked off.
Uh, yeah.
Um, Jackie was LPC, ZLA has not met. Um, now you can get, now we can get busy with that one. Um, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec uh in our last meeting had a presentation from a member of the Michigan Natural Features Inventory. In which they made a proposal to, uh, or actually a presentation that showed what they could do for us. In the Parks and Rec group and the whole township to do a complete inventory of what's in our. Um, our parks and preserves. And they'll, we're going to continue working with them to find out what we should contract with them, or. We, in the past, what we just did this last year was we had our interns do that inventory on two of our parks. This would be a much more complete and in-depth evaluation, and let us know what we really hold. So that we can know what we want to do going forward, so that's the biggest thing that's taking place there.
Okay, Tap.
We do have a meeting this Wednesday, November tenth, at four o'clock.
Okay, anything further on the Huron River Watershed Council?
No, I think I snuck in that the board meeting is on the eighteenth, so that was really what I was going to announce.
Okay, all right, great. Um, thank you, everyone, for uh representing the commission with all of these um committees. Um, next, uh, we have the minutes of the ten twenty-five meeting, and uh. I'd like to entertain, if anyone has any comments, so revisions to those minutes. Uh, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as posted.
So moved.
Moved, moved by Commissioner Hyde, support by Commissioner.
Sharma.
Sharma. Any other comments? All right, uh, Commissioner Chang, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culbertson.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, and are there any other announcements or of this?
I think this is our last hybrid meeting of the year.
It is, we will be um all virtual uh for the remainder of the meetings. Um, hopefully all uh announcements, or I should say notices, uh, will go out to that effect. Um, and that'll just be a reminder, and that'll be um through the end of December unless there are. Um, other changes in the Open Meetings Act uh or by the trustees, uh, the state and or the trustees. So um with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Commissioner Moore. And support by. Commissioner Hyde. Any other comments? I do want to thank um our, our hosts at the, at the township, and we look forward to seeing you back virtually. Um, and with that, uh, roll call vote, please, Secretary Chang.
Hey, Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sharma.
Yes.
Hyde.
Yes.
Chang, yes. Culbertson.
Yes.
We are adjourned.
We are adjourned at nine oh nine. Uh, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate your time and the homework that you do before the meetings.
See you next time.
Recording stopped.
Thanks.
See you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.